This is recorded, so everybody mind your Ps and Qs. That took a little getting used to the first couple of times.
Okay, I've got a little bit after six thirty, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start off with a roll call. Doug Rothwaller.
Here.
Steve Bacon.
Here.
Brian Lang. Kevin Oliver. Tom Shelley.
Yes, sir.
Peggy Brown. Tony Becker.
Here.
Lonny Compton.
Here.
Did everyone have a chance to look over the minutes of the last meeting? And if so, I would entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Uh, next thing would be unfinished business. I don't believe we have anything there, so we'll move on to new business. The first item I have, uh, is Joseph and Kayla Linville are requesting a lot subdivision permit for one oh six Glenon Heights Road, Crystal City, Missouri.
Oh, that's the second one.
It's the first one I got on my list.
Oh, there are...
Chill.
I'm sorry, it should be...
Well, let's do it. They're not here anyway, are they?
There's at seven. Here you go. The planning is on...
Well, that's a public meeting at seven.
Mine's at six thirty though.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, Kimber's at six thirty.
Yep. Jeff, not that this has had any bearing on anything, but is your prin- is your wife the principal at Our Lady's School?
Yes, sir.
I met her just last week, she's a nice lady, thank you.
And she has a, um, option meeting for nine.
Gotcha.
Okay. New business, we got Jeff and Tracy Kemfer, Raleigh Storage, are requesting a conditional use permit to expand storage units. At twelve twenty-four North Truman Boulevard, Crystal City, Missouri. Okay, Jeff, uh, do you wanna get up and, uh, make a presentation on exactly what you, uh, wanna do here and kinda go through the drawings that you have?
Sure. Um, from the last minutes of the meeting, you know, we talked about step along the front and starting in the back, coming forward, which is what we have done. Um, I do have a rendering here of... I cannot let this all fall on the floor. And I also have... Which would contain an office, um, bathroom, um, a couple hallway entrances in the front to bring, um, items in through, and then the office will have its own door there as well. Let me show you. Okay. Um, it is no farther forward at all. Um, the step back, I believe, is ten foot off the right away, which that building's about twelve foot off the right away. Because the lot sits at an angle like this, kind of on that, the, the drawing that's there, um, the left side of this building, which is where the... The left side of this building here is where the old building, the old building sits about right here. This corner is just barely behind where the existing building sits, and this corner is about sixteen feet farther back, sorry, because of the way the lot is angled, and that's on the side where the entrance would be. So, the entrance side of it's got, I think it's forty-six feet to edge of curb on that side of it. And I know you had talked about twenty foot for parking spaces. Um, yeah, on the right side past the entrance, it's forty-six, and on the left side it's about, I guess I'd say thirty-eight feet, something like that. Um, and to help a little bit... Uh-huh. That's existing, the one we just built. Yeah, that's the one, yep. Correct, right, no, no. Next, yeah, all at one time, next, once we... Right, right, correct. I don't have it, let me see here. I think the square that's there, if I can...
This line, across here, was the building, it made five feet forward, this is where it went.
Okay.
And that's where it's three sixty, through here, to the building, and in front of the sidewalk, and then...
So, this, this is the front of the building, the building's gonna be that deep?
Correct, eight five feet.
Okay. And then, it's gonna tie in to these four buildings, or is that what we're seeing on this other page right here, the leaning through? Right here. What is that, and that's out of the lines when you look at it on this, and I couldn't figure out what you're doing.
So, this is the existing building, this one?
This is?
Yeah. Foundation of the new building, this is the new building.
Okay.
Eight five feet.
Okay.
Uh, left, the right, oh, that's just thirty four.
Mm-hmm.
At least you can, okay, right away, thirty six feet to the wall, that's probably what, is where they come in now. So, eight here right now.
Right here.
Eight here.
Yeah.
Okay. So, they have to move here. And that's what we can't, yeah, right, forty eight, forty, forty six feet from that payment who's sitting there.
Mm-hmm.
And then, this is the office, two entry doors, from up here.
Right.
Parking, and then, it's just two hallways with the American Embassy over here.
So, here, what are you gonna get, you just said about parking, where is the parking for here?
The right away, down here.
Right.
There's parking on the top side of the right away.
So, you've got twenty foot, and when you take back from the right away, that's how many feet? From the right away to the front of that building?
On this side, this side is about eighty feet, about...
Off the right way? And you're gonna, how you gonna be parking?
Well, they, uh, MoDOT, and MoDOT, interesting, uh, so you have an entrance and an exit there.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, the restaurant, we said, oh, that's what we have on. Then, I said, okay, so, do I need to insert an exit that way? And they said, well, Calum, huh? So, I said, okay, how much room is this, and we did, we said, oh, it's all on the right way, it's like your paper, you know, or...
Right, and right hand, where you're talking about, where, uh, those, uh, how the danger zone is, where they all park at?
So, they looked at that, and they said, well, you've got more room than they do, and an entrance and an exit if you keep it that way. So, I said, well, what do you, what do you do? And I said, life did not cut grass out there anymore, you know, where the, all those trees and everything was growing up. So, I asked, and there could be two, uh, almost like a circle drive around there, but they said, you got an entrance and an exit, and it just would be, depend on driving lanes, um, for what you want, and that's, these front two doors is where I want them to, to, uh, what do you call it, uh, load and unload. So, and as you've seen, we don't ever have a car parked there. Uh, customers that come that are in the back are few and far between, there's never a, you know, a traffic jam or anything. But, those spots would, would be at least, uh, there'd be two twelve foot lanes, plus I then have, from the right away, the ten feet to the front of the building that's on my, on, not on the right away for parking. They would be sideways though, not pull in, unless, unless you want them to be pull in, like the neighbors. I just thought that it would be easier if I got entrance and exit, that they come in and can turn and go out in the other way, as opposed to where the wagon sits pretty much next to me in that farm implement, on the other side down there, of Alexander Heights, so...
Yeah, I didn't know, but, uh, on the right of the right way, MoDOT, Army, the highway department, that's what they do, they do anything.
Well, and that's why I went to them to ask them about the ingress or egress, or if they wanted to change it. Well, then that's when they got, they came back with the widening the lane. Right. And, and they asked for a plan, as well as when we gave them our retention from the last set that runs down there to the side and goes out. They have the retention plan that was there from that, and then they, they asked me for plans for this.
Right.
So, and then, I do have the plans for the storm drains, and all they're taking, the curb stays there, it's there, and that's where I keep talking, edge of curb or edge of pavement, that is supposed to be a turn lane if, you know, it, it would ever go, but yeah, there's thirty-eight feet from that curb, where they can easily get, uh, truck and a trailer pulling in, that comes in to go to one side, or they can turn and go around and go out the other exit. So, from that, on this, would you need more of a loading zone, a loading area, or do you want parking spots? You know, to where, granted, there could be both, there could be five parking spots along the front of the building, plus two twelve foot turn lanes to get around from one entrance to the other per MoDOT. Right, right, and, and that's, well, and the only place they would be stacked, and I don't know that I... Would be, they're lined up to get into those loading doors, or those two front hallway doors, the entrance doors. Well, they, they just have to pull into them, they'd just be a load... Right. Right. Right, right. Well, right. Sure, sure. Right. Well, and, and Mrs., um, Alex- that owns Alexander Heights, um, Middleton, Mrs. Middleton, came in and was worried about me covering up her building, 'cause they just had put a little sign up, and, and the way that lot sits, I showed her, I marked it out, you could almost still see the half of their building coming down the highway, because that one side, 'cause this is at an angle, is back that far, you know, which is a lot more on the entrance side of coming in, so... But yeah, and I can go through MoDOT, or however they wanna do it, they're selling uh, right away nowadays, so if I have to buy it back, I can, just like out there at, uh, was that Big Don's, where Big Don's used to be right in front of Pius? They got a big sign up saying, "MoDOT right away for sale," and through AT&T, we deal with that every day, so... Well, and the... Right. Well, and Alexander Heights is, is twenty-five feet closer to the road than me, also, you know, to where, that's where they, I mean, I see cars, they're, they're in at an angle, and they back out and they're in the first lane, you know, so... But, uh, but yeah, that's where I thought it might, like you said, might be better to have turnaround there, you know, so, yeah. Right. Mm-hmm. Right, right.
And I kinda remember that, that it seemed like it was in some, on the front end of the, from that...
Yeah, it would be bad, like, uh, so President, uh, you know, we're...
Maybe we should talk about more of the building up there, and say the story.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I think we were also thinking, if you had an office in front, you'd sell it in tax, so...
Sure. Well, we, we did talk about raising the building, I remember Mr. Compton talked about raising the building, it's just, I remember that word, and then Mr. Bacon talked about doing our, my due diligence to start in the back, and to build forward in case we had somebody that wanted to come in that was sales tax. And I said, I'll start in the back, I'll move forward, we'll have one gate in, one gate out, all the lights, none of them shining, you know, everything's shining down on the property, and everything was on the building. I think in the packet you have, it has, it's different than what it is. It's, it's like it's got, on the picture that has like a drawing of, uh...
Okay, so, the original picture isn't the same, and it was like, you know, that's right. You go to that, that shows buildings here, back and here, and they're not there, it's just this building like it is in the rain. So, there was more feet of parking and another driveway to get around buildings, so when people were...
Park there in the loading zone or park, they could still drive around them to get around the building, so... But yeah, that was, uh, we talked about that, and then Mr. Bacon, you wanted masonry or stone, or something that didn't look just like that, and, and in the, in the picture that I have, basically, I'd like to do masonry if I can, and make masonry panels. Mm-hmm. Um, and, you know, windows like this is, on the right and the left, the big spots, there may be a sign, if I can do that, putting it there, you know, just on the outside edges of that, so that would be the only thing that would be different. You know, and then on Bacon's side, it's just straight building, you know, a few feet off the property line like the building we have there now, so...
Anybody else have any questions? I press, I think I got this right. So, the, the, your, your, your entrance and, and exit scheme is gonna be, they come in on one side, go drive in front of across the building and drive out?
Yeah.
And, and the rest of the circulation within the site, they go in, up, and around, and then back out?
Right.
So, is that one supposed to be in and out, or is it just...
One gate in and out, yeah.
So, that, that, yeah, I, and I presume that's wide enough for two-way traffic, the one on the right hand?
Yeah, yeah, and then I actually...
Well, I mean, when it was, when it was the, the drive-through before, it was meant just for, you know, one, one-way traffic, so it may have only been wide enough for one car at a time.
Gotcha, but both lanes, the building had two yardage lanes?
Mm-hmm.
And they both exited the same out?
Yeah.
So, it's wide enough for both.
Okay, okay. Um, and you were talking about not having to, having to do any landscaping or groundskeeping or anything, um, our, in our yard regulations, uh, we are, we call for a ten-foot front yard, and it does say that the front yards are supposed to be devoted entirely to landscaped area, um, except for guest parking and the necessary paving of driveways and sidewalks to reach the parking or loading areas in the side or rear yard. Um, but it sounds like you wouldn't have any landscaping out there at all, if you had...
If I could help it, no.
Right, okay.
I'm cutting, uh, I don't understand, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, and yeah, would just be paving and to get around to there, and then a curb on the front, you know, right, coming out, or a sidewalk.
Okay.
In that, that ten feet.
All right.
Yeah, 'cause that's like Alexander Heights, or Alexander next to me is like that, they just have paving right up to the front of the building, you know, so...
And you got the same thing at the, uh, England's district across there, there's nothing, Launerman has no, nothing there too. On that section of the highway, that's pretty much the way it is.
Yeah. Okay.
And I'll say, I hope to goodness they're gonna put the turn lanes in water, uh, storm water, you know, 'cause I have pictures of the water just being over the second lane in the middle of the road.
I think that's the biggest thing to work on, is to start one third.
Yeah, and one of the reasons that's why we had to do the retention on the other part, 'cause we wanted zero damage happen.
When they did that, sure.
The condition's worse, so we did, I don't know if everybody remembers, but we did underground story for storm one.
Do you know what the status is of those, uh, MoDOT improvements on that section of road there?
No, I don't.
I don't know either.
You recall, it's been quite a few years ago, Lonny, you might remember it, well, I tell you, Ronnie, Ronnie Ray was still on the council, and Donnie Ray was on the council.
Yes, before, ten years ago.
And he worked for MoDOT, and we had all that rain, and that road right there actually lifted, I mean, it, it was raised up and tilted.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a straight stretch, and it ends up like it, and cars were coming up there, and I thought they were gonna turn over, flip over. I, we went up there, and we shut the road down, and then, went right back in. No, I got, I kinda got in trouble, we could, MoDOT, but you...
Shut, shut off her.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for him? If not, then, uh, I would entertain a motion on his conditional use that he's, uh, requesting. Okay, I'll make the motion then, I'll make a motion that, uh, we...
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, that's out of order for the, the chairman to make a motion, I'll make the motion. Uh, I'll make the motion to approve the conditional use permit as proposed.
All right, we got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Sorry, Lonny, that's just not the way it's done.
I think you're wrong, but go ahead. As a mayor, the mayor can not make a motion, but as chairman, I can make a motion.
Any, yeah, according to Roberts Rules of Order, any, any chair is not supposed to make a motion.
You, that's correct, you're not supposed to, but when nobody talks, then you can make a motion. I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, sir, you're good, thank you.
Thank you, no, thank you all.
Appreciate it. And the only reason I was making the motion is 'cause nobody made it.
I was, I was thinking.
Hmm?
I was thinking. So, we're waiting until seven for the next section?
Yeah, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, go in there a second. Can I say and listen to theirs, or do I just, yes, okay?
Yeah.
Man, how come we did that in two different meetings? Before, we'd just line them up and go through it.
I don't know.
I think we were always, uh, since I've been here, we've done two different ones already, 'cause you got, it's...
Was ever having, that I know of.
What I understood on that sunshine law, you gotta adjourn one meeting, and you gotta go into the next meeting.
We just had that last week, so we need to adjourn this one.
That's correct. Yeah, 'cause we advertised it as two separate meetings.
Well, if that's the case, I'll move to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll make the second.
We got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion carries.
Are we still streaming?
Yeah.
I, well, I was just, I was just gonna ask a question real quick, is, from this one here coming up, is this, it's a single-family dwelling, but it says a subdivision? A lot sub... Okay, but it's a single-family dwelling on this lot, okay. Oh, okay, gotcha. So, there's a building there already?
Mm-hmm.
I knew there was a house. This is, this is where you go back to, okay, so there was one home here. Yeah, there's a house back there. Oh, is that, that road goes back, doesn't it? Yeah, gotcha.
I got a little bit after, uh, seven o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order, we'll start off with, uh, roll call. Doug Rothwaller.
Here.
Steve Bacon.
Here.
Brian Lang. Kevin Oliver. Tom Shelley.
Yes, sir.
Peggy Brown. Tony Becker.
Yes, sir.
Eric Roth. Lonny Compton.
Here.
Next thing on the agenda is new business. We have Joseph and Kayla Linville are requesting a lot subdivision permit for one oh six Glenon Heights Road, Crystal City, Missouri, for a lot subdivision for construction of a single-family home. So, at this time, if you wanna come forward and, uh, tell us a little bit about what you got going on there, we see from your drawing of lot size and everything.
Sure, we just, we had to subdivide the lot, 'cause there's an existing house back there at the end of that road, uh, for the bank loan, so we subdivided the lot so we could build our new house, uh, towards the front, right there when Glenon Heights ends.
Right.
Yeah, we bought the eight acres, um, to have to ourselves, so there's an existing house that we'll keep, but we plan to build our new home there as well, so, just one home.
And what it shows is that you're, uh... And what it shows is that you're, uh, dividing out one point one acre from where the existing frame house is?
That's correct.
And that's gonna leave you on the lot two, six point zero one acres.
That's correct.
So, and then you're pu- and you're moving your new home up closer to the existing road.
Correct.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for him?
I'm not sure that I do unless the, uh, does the building department have any comment on this, Rick?
Uh, these, this lot originally was somewhat landlocked.
Mm-hmm.
They purchased property from the new issue, which now, called-
I see.
The next was Glen and Heights.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've also went over storm, and, or not storm, but sanitary and water hookups with-
Mm-hmm.
The existing house down there is on a forest main with a grinder pump, right?
Correct.
And it's got a water service, and this one will follow the same suit, right?
So lift station, grindy pump, similar.
So what, what, what is the, how do you access the existing home now?
Uh, I thought that was all Glen and Heights Road, but apparently Glen and Heights ends right at the property line. Uh, there was a road there that's been there for probably nine years.
It goes off to the right, right before the gate.
Okay, center, I, I'm sorry, I missed centerline existing road, okay.
Yeah, right before that gate, it goes down to the right.
Originally, this home was like listed, you know, like in open market, and no one bought it, and then no one bought it at the Jackson County Auctions, so then we went to an online auction, so we purchased it from an online auction in two thousand and nineteen. Well, with everything being out of state, like, we didn't know at the time this was landlocked, so. Um, it's been a process from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one to get everything in order, to, you know, have everything correct for us in order to build, you know, the road, you know, wasn't on there. Once we had it surveyed, you know, it was definitely part of the new issue, so.
We've had quite a few phone calls and conversations together with, with this couple, and myself, and Rick, and to put them on the, on the right track on, on what to do with it, so.
So is the, the existing road, that's not a city street, right? Is it, so will it be a private road, and is there, it- Okay, and it, and so there needs to be an easement or something recorded to-
We, we got that, that was one of our, we just keep hitting barrier after barrier, but that was one of our issues, so.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't reported the, um-
With the easement.
They sold the, uh, Mr. Casey sold it to us for a dollar, so.
Okay, so there's dedicated access to this, to the, to the back lot?
Yeah, pre-letting and road.
Okay.
Uh, gas and electric.
There's a gas hookup too on his property, he threw that in there as well, so it's all.
Okay. And this surely meets the minimum lot size for whatever the zoning is, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Does it meet the, does it meet the minimum setbacks and everything as well, Rick?
Yeah.
I, I can imagine what, what the problem would be.
And they also know that the new driveway will have to be hard surface, and can't be gravel like the existing driveway.
I don't see any issues unless anybody else does.
Anybody else have any questions for him? Okay, no questions, then I'd entertain a motion. So move. So we, so we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion carries. All right.
We appreciate your, your patience with it too, I mean, I know it was aggravating to you and really, I guess, misunderstanding, you know, but that, that's fine, but that's, that's what that man over here is for, and that's what this, this board is for, to put you on the right foot, so.
Subdiving the lot came up when we tried to borrow our bills.
Sure.
We're more than this is going, I think of ourselves as fairly young, you know, so.
Well, I'd look at myself as fairly young. Good, good. Very good, good luck.
Nice forever home, you know?
Yep.
Hope so.
Okay.
All right. Nope, it's over, we're done, thank you very much.
You go to the council then.
Okay. Twenty-sixth?
Well, right, had to get the paperwork, get it into paper, get it on the agenda for the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Do I need to as well? No, oh, okay, I thought it was, okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, with no old business, I'd entertain a motion to a, adjourn, so move.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion carries.
All right.
Did you get your house done, did you get moved in?
We're just about done.
Good deal.
Waiting on, trying to do like, one thing, there was, uh-